All right, I'll call the Rich County Commission meeting to order February seventh, two thousand twenty four. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Did you need doing that for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Is the agenda good for today? No cancellations or anything?
I'll make a motion if we accept this agenda as presented for today.
Okay, motions, uh, set the agenda for the day. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, bike path update.
Okay, I'm gonna get Lyndon Fryant from Jones and DeMille Engineering on the phone.
Hello.
Hello, sir, this is Annalisa calling from the commissioning. Are you ready to go?
Thank you. Figuring that so much. Am I speaker?
Yep, you are on speaker, so you, uh, go ahead, Sam.
You're good to go, Lyndon.
Morning, Commissioners. Hey, I just wanted to, I got on the agenda prior to our meeting that we had last week, but I wanna update maybe on, uh, for the record as well on our little bike path project. Uh, the, as you know, we were, we were encroaching or pushing on that high water mark. So we're looking at cannoli, you know, narrowing the bike path up to eight feet from ten feet and cantilevering out over the high water mark with our bike path. Uh, and as we started going through the, the permitting process, uh, and visiting with Forest Street Fire and Lands, they, they mentioned it doesn't matter if we're cantilevering, cantilevering over the high water mark or we're actually building over the high water mark, we still have to go through the same permitting. And so when we visited with, uh, Jessica about that, we basically said, well, if we've gotta get clearances, why don't we save a lot of money and see about just getting rid of the retaining walls and the cantilever portion of the path? And so we met last, uh, was it Friday? And we visited about it and they are all in favor of, of, we, they wanted us to get the impact amounts to the, to sum up the impacts to the high water mark and how far out into the high water mark we need to go in order to get, get those possible clearances. So we got those, that information to them on Friday or Monday and they, they want to look into that. They're gonna, especially the, the parking lot widening, they're gonna go out anywhere to thirty to fifty feet inside the high water mark. Uh, the bike paths only gonna go out maybe ten feet into the high water mark. But as you guys know, part of this project is to increase parking along that section of, of, of roadways or, you know, along that section of lake. So we are, we're just in the process of getting that. Uh, she's, uh, Jessica's visiting with her higher ups to see what kind of permitting. Uh, they hope they don't have to have Army Corps permitting, but we may have to do an Army Corps permit. Uh, and my hopes is that if we do need an Army Corps permit, we can get this bid out and just put stipulations in the, in the project that work can't begin until the Army Corps permit is permitted with an anticipated date of when that would be. So, uh, Commissioner, I guess Commissioner Weston, I'll, or I'll send it to Annalisa. We've got the little application for the, the permitting that I will get to you tomorrow or Friday. Uh, and it will just need to have your signature and somebody notarize it and then you can scan it and send it back to, to Jessica or to me and I get it to Jessica so that she can start that permitting process.
Okay, I'll be gone.
Well, Monday's fine too, just whenever you can get a sign to get it back to me.
I'll be gone, uh, Friday till next week, so if we get it tomorrow, I can do it or else it'll be like Wednesday.
Okay, or if you want Commissioner Cox, well, I'll let you guys decide, you know. Annalisa could even sign it for the county.
We're all gonna.
Just needs to have a county representative on it.
We're all gonna be in D C, um, starting tomorrow afternoon, um, until next, uh, Tuesday night, so we'll be back in the county on Wednesday.
Wednesday, no worries. So I'll just get that to Annalisa and then you guys can, if I'm sure, somebody, Annalisa or one of those guys, or notarize at the, at the, uh, county office and then like I said, just sign it and send it back to me, scan it. Uh, our hopes are, you know, it's basic, we're waiting for them, the state, uh, to tell us that yes, this proposal's good or you guys need to scale back some of those widening areas. And then at that point, once they give us that direction on what they're gonna allow us to do, then we can finalize the design and get it out to bid and get those bids in place with those restrictions of anticipated, no work until our clearances are achieved at, at this anticipated date. And then, uh, just get, maybe then we'll get them finalized, get them out to bid. So I'm hoping in the next couple of months we'll have, uh, bid opening, but I'll keep my fingers crossed, Annalisa, or Annalisa, Jessica, manager with Forest, Fire and Land, she seems to be on the ball about wanting to, to expedite as much as possible. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we can get some answers as quick as possible and then, uh, but right now we're just waiting on that application. It's a real simple application, but I'll get it. Like I said, hopefully tomorrow or Friday, but I guess if you guys are leaving tomorrow anyway, it doesn't matter, so. But it'll be Annalisa's and your emails, uh, when you get back.
Okay, sounds good.
Other than that, any questions for me?
Um, no, I don't think so, uh. Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think so, uh.
Okay.
As far as, um, the, uh, the impact, how, how much, how much was there on the impact? They, they said they wanted, you know, how much that area, that actually, what, what did that turn out to be?
Yeah, I wish I could remember the area. Linear footage wise was like thing or three and a half plus miles that could be impacted, whether it was one foot or, the majority of it was less than fifteen feet, but there was several areas that were out to thirty to fifty feet. Uh, I think I carbon you on that email when I sent it her. I just don't have it in front of me, so I can't remember.
Okay.
Four, the four acres, I wish I could remember, but.
I just, I was just curious, 'cause I, as we move through that process, if we end up having to go to the core, um, you know, that may be something we'll have to look pretty strongly at because that may, you know, that may be one of those things we may have to mitigate, so.
Correct, and, and if you give me two seconds here, I actually have that number on an email here. I still thought I did, but anyway, I'll keep looking, uh, but yeah, that's kinda where we're at on that, so.
Okay.
Okay, four point five acres is what it's, four point five eight.
Okay.
We're just gonna round it up to five acres.
Okay.
So, yep.
I hope, I hope that Tracy and Jesse's higher uppers are as good to work with as they are. They seem to be really good to work with, so I hope this can go through quickly.
Yeah, and, and I need to clarify, it's just over ten thousand linear feet of, of shoreline impacts, but almost twenty-three hundred feet of it, sorry, actually, almost four thousand feet of that impact is for the widening of the park spots.
Okay.
Probably about a mile, the mile of the impact, or maybe a little over a mile is for the actual bike path.
Okay. Okay, good. Well, we'll be, we'll be expecting that, um, and, uh, we'll, we'll let get that expedited and, and, uh, we'll move along with the premiere.
Perfect. Okay, I'll get it to you and, uh, enjoy Washington. I'll, I'm gonna stay on and leave Annalisa for the next item on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm gonna try to conference, uh, Jake Woodbury from Q R S Consulting on the line, so just a moment. If I end up losing you, I'll call you back.
No worries, sounds great.
Hi, is this Jake Woodbury?
Yes.
Hi, it's Annalisa. I'm gonna bring you on the line with the Commissioners, just a moment. Okay, Mr. Fr- uh, Frent, right? Is it Frent or Fryant? I don't know how to say it.
Fr- Fryant.
Fryant. I, I've got Mr. Woodbury on the line with us, so here we go.
Hello, everyone?
Hi. You're.
So have you, uh, had an introduction to, or given an introduction, uh, to the project or should I start rambling?
No, go ahead and tell us your, uh, for the record, your name and, and what you got going.
All right, my name is Jake Woodbury. I'm with Q R S Consulting. I am, um, contracted by Chet Unlimited. I'm working with Jim Burrito, um, on the design for a replacement of the culvert of the, uh, North System Road Crossing, North Eden Creek. And we last met with you guys, I believe, back in August of twenty twenty-two to present some conceptual alternatives for a culvert replacement design. And the purpose of, of getting in front of you guys today is to just give you an update on the project and see if you guys have any comments or concerns that we need to address. Uh, we recently wrapped up the sixty percent design in December of twenty-three. And so right now, um, I don't have the, um, obviously the, the plans in front of you guys, but I can certainly send those to you if you'd like to see them. Um, in a nutshell, we're looking to replace the existing six inch or six foot diameter, um, culvert with a, a twelve foot span by six foot rise, um, open bottom arch culvert. And with the, um, as we have that infrastructure bill, it looks like Chet Unlimited has secured the fundings to take this to final design and construction of this year. And so that's why I want to, um, ultimately get this project in front of you guys in its current form and, and see if there's anything that we need to consider or hear from you guys in order to be able to construct this year. And as of right now, I believe that the, the goal is to start construction after Labor Day. Uh, we have intention of, of waiting for traffic, sometime traffic to die down over there, so we, um, have, uh, limited disturbance on, um, you know, just, um, traffic on that road. And and that's, that's ultimately, yeah, I, I've sent the sixty percent design drawings over to Lyndon for initial comment and I, I can certainly send it over to you guys. Um, but the, the hope is simply to just get an understanding of, of what you might need or, or, or want, um, before this, this goes into the ground and make sure everyone's on board and happy with the project.
We have a bunch of drawings and pictures in front of us.
So, so Jake, how, you know, looks like the span of, of the, of the galvanize steel arch pipe is gonna be twelve feet, so what's the overall impact going to be to our road? I mean, are you looking at, obviously it's gonna be at least twelve, but how much more are you gonna have to excavate of, out of the road to, uh, to accommodate that?
So we will, my assumption is that the contractor is gonna need to excavate out from the bottom of the foundation at a, at least a one-to-one slope to make sure they're safe. And, and then, so by the time they catch the top of the road, we're, we're chopping up a, a good chunk of it. Um, and that exact amount, that length of the road is not clear to me, 'cause it may depend on the contractor's approach. Um, and one of the, the factors influencing that really, it, I mean, it comes down to just constructability issues and, and, um, the need to provide temporary, um, road crossing around that, so they, they might phase this project where they do the lower half of the culvert first and chop up half, half or chunk of the road and, and re divert traffic around the north side of it. Or, let's see, I'm sorry, let me open up the plans here, make sure I'm giving correct directions here, um.
At the east?
Y- yeah, the, the east and upstream side of this. And so, um, so I, they, depending on how they, they wanna go about it, they might use shoring, which would limit, limit the amount of excavating they have to do out into the road, but that's really gonna be up to them. And we'll make our best estimate and I'll reach out to the contractors to try and get their, their opinion of what their approach is going to be. But worst case scenario, I, I would think that they go from the foundations out at a one-to-one slope. And what that distance is, uh, or road length to be torn up, I'm not sure exactly, but.
I bet it's gonna be sixty to eighty feet of roadway.
Uh, yeah, some, that, that sounds reasonable.
Well, but what sixty to eighty feet, so is that, is that across the road? I mean, is that, is that the width of the utility cut or the culvert cut that's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to deal with in the years to come? Um, is it gonna be, how wide is that utility cut basically gonna be?
Yeah, it would be that sixty to eighty feet. So they, I mean, stock cut, stock cut, you know, forty feet either side of the center line of the creek and then, and then excavate their safety slopes down to the, the channel bottom to install that, that bottom, that their, uh, stem walls and then their arch culvert.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because, um, we have an agreement that, you know, whatever, um, upkeep is, is gotta be in maintenance, is gotta be on that, on that piece that, you know, Chet Unlimited is gonna be responsible for that.
So, so my, um, understanding is, is that the main maintenance issue when you cut into the road is, is going to be at the seam where you saw a cut. So you'll have two sections, um, two cuts on either side of the center line of that culvert and, and that's likely where you'll see, um, maybe some, some cracking or, or differential settlement over, over time that would have to be addressed, but it wouldn't necessarily be a concern for the whole length of road to be replaced. Um, I guess for, for clarification on the expectations, um, for the responsibility and maintenance of, of this section of road for the long term, um, wha- what, wha- what are we looking at in terms of, uh, you know, is this a, a ten-year period or twenty-year period that you'd expect T U to be responsible for repairing that? That, that would be an important consideration for, uh, Chet Unlimited to, to know.
Well, what's, what's our life expend- expectancy, um, Lyndon, of our, of our asphalt road there? I mean, what was it designed for?
It's, it is a twenty-year design, but obviously with proper maintenance, we can get it out further. Uh, my, my concern is make sure, just like when we did the road itself, we had a one-year warranty so that if it went through a, a, a winter cycle and settling could happen, then that the contractor was, would need to come back in and make any repairs. I would highly recommend at least a minimum of a one-year warranty so that, you know, and, and as I was visiting with Jake, you know, my concern or make sure we get compaction tests uh, to ninety-six to ninety-seven percent minimum on our embankment and ninety-seven percent on our untreated base. Bring it up in proper list and document that and submit the county with that proper documentation. And then, uh, uh, it, it, just like with any of the work we did when we build it, we have that one-year warranty and hopefully any, something would magnify itself within that year if there were gonna have issues. Now, is there going to be some minor settlement years two through ten possibly? But the majority of the issue should arise within that first, first year. And then when it comes to maintenance, uh, you know what, make them, 'cause we chipped it, although it's been three years since we chipped it, it'll probably be another three, four years before we chip it on the whole road again. I would definitely have them, uh, chip seal their section, seal it, seal it so that that isn't an issue for you in the future. Yeah, you are going to have some of that transverse joint cracking, uh, but if it's paved correctly and ground smoothly, uh, or paved smooth, i- it shouldn't be any different than, than our joints when, when we paved it originally. So a crack, you know, you should be expected to crack seal it here. You know, in the next two, three years, that crack will start opening up and you need to just crack seal it. You could maybe even include, include that, uh, joint to be crack sealed by Chet Unlimited and, and three, in three years from now, 'cause like I said, it will, three years from construction, 'cause it will open up a little bit just to save you from that ex- that maintenance expense.
Okay, so we want to include in our contract, um, a one-year warranty. We will do sufficient compaction testing during re- rebuild of the embankment. Make sure we're at ninety-six percent compaction. We'll, we'll save all those tests and the results and submit those to the county. And then we will have, uh, the road chip sealed on construction. And then within, uh, and, and then T U will be responsible for crack seal at the joints for, uh, within, within two, two, three years of construction.
Yeah, I'd probably go, I'd probably say at least three to four, 'cause it, it is gonna take me a year or two to open up. Uh, but then you, you want it to be at least an eighth of an inch wide or the crack seal does no good. So probably by year three or four is when that would happen, after construction.
Okay.
That's, that's maybe what I'd recommend, Commissioner.
Okay. Alrighty, do you see a problem with that? Jake?
Uh, no, not at all. I think this is the exact kind of information that I want to hear from you guys to, to make sure that, um, you guys feel like, uh, your road will be taken care of and, and I understand that the responsibility falls on us, 'cause we are, um, you know, modifying your roadway. So if this is, is what you need from us, we can make this happen. Um, and I think in addition to this, I, I guess I was curious about your thoughts on timing of the construction. Um, you know, our best guess was to simply plan for this to be constructed after Labor Day. Uh, do you guys have any additional thoughts on that timing?
Well, at, at least after Labor Day, um, you know, and I, to the middle of September, I think probably, um, by that time, things have, 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 you know, slowed down to the point of where there'd be a lot less traffic that they would have to deal with as well as, as, um, the fact that you're gonna have to move along or you won't be able to lay pavement. Um, you know, by the, by the middle of October, um, it's gonna be too cold to put pavement in, so.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get that constructed in a month. That was, the other concern I have is, is that maintenance of that hundred feet, eighty, sixty to eighty feet or whatever roadway, uh, through the wintertime until it can be paved next spring, you know?
What are you guys' thoughts on that? If we get to? What are you guys' thoughts on that? If we had to have a temporary measure through the the winter on that section of road and then come back and repaint in the spring, would you be okay with that?
Well, I'd ra- I'd rather have you do that than to than to pave it and then have an issue with the the fact that it was just too cold when we laid down the 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 pavement.
That that that's fine, maybe we can get that into the contract. The only other alternative to that would be starting earlier, which I'm assuming uh folks would not be on board. With we uh we are planning on providing um temporary traffic, we can do a two-lane road, we already got um permission from the landowners to to utilize some of their land upstream of the road if we have to build out a temporary road, so is that something that we could consider so that we could get fully constructed and paved before it gets too cold in October?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, you know, a bypass if the if the landowners have agreed to that, you know, that's that's fine, as long as that doesn't go in, you know, to the winter time, I mean, that's that we can't have a bypass around there during the winter, so you know, it would need to be you know, expedited as quickly as possible.
Okay, well, I'll get on the horn with um, you know, contractors, get their opinions on this, um. As an engineer, I'm not quite as good at estimating how long this would take realistically to to construct, but understanding what our constraints are time-wise and and what your concerns are, uh we can work with them to figure that out and and come up with a solid plan, whether we can, they're confident they can do it before October, if we start a little bit earlier, you know, or if we need to uh put in some temporary measures and then come back and paint in the spring. I'll uh.
Yeah, I bet it's gonna be at least, it's gonna be at least a sixty-day project, cause I just did a couple similar box cover replacements this past year, and that's, they were sixty, seventy-five days.
That sounds reasonable to me, yeah, a month is is just too short for all the
So with that being said, you're gonna be into November to pay, which is gonna be too cold. So maybe if you did, were able to build a bypass so that will maintain traffic flows and not interrupt the traffic patterns, and you get in, uh Commissioner, you you decide, but then that would allow them to maybe start a little sooner so that it can be paid by the Oc- the October deadline. And then you just have to come back, cause the the chip seal windows till August thirty-first, so you'd still have to come back in the next year and just you know, that that typical section I gave you Jake, where we just chip sealed the road and a couple feet outside of the shoulder, and then we just flush coat the bike path, just seal that. So we don't necessarily need to chip seal the whole width, just the roadway and that two-foot shoulder.
Okay, chip seal windows to August?
Thirty-first, yeah.
Thirty-first, it has to be done by um and then and then roadway with no and shoulder, okay.
And Jake, uh I think one thing you need to be aware of too is that the state parks is opening their new the new section of their park up there, so there's gonna be quite a bit of increased traffic this year that I I if it were to be done years before, it'd be a lot easier, but there's gonna be a lot more heavy traffic coming through to that state park to the north.
Okay, yeah, I I heard about that, it's um.
Be awesome though, we're excited, we're excited for it, this'll be awesome.
Yeah. Looking forward to seeing that, um, okay, is there is there anything else that that we're not thinking of, or hasn't been mentioned just yet that we we should include in this contract, any other, any other concerns?
I just make sure you maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction at all times, whether that's a bypass or doing half and half.
Okay, two lanes of traffic.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all you guys got for me, that that is uh sufficient, I'll I'll be sure you guys, um, I'll see the the final design set, maybe revisit this and see if any other issues come up, um, but yeah, I just wanna make sure that everyone's on board and we're all in agreement and happy with the happy with this project overall, so appreciate your time and your input.
Okay, thanks Jake.
Commissioners, if Jake sends anything to me, I'll make sure I carve in any comments back to you with with those reviews.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks Lyndon.
Jake, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Take care everyone, thank you.
Okay. William Swart- Schwartz. You wanna come come on up? State your name for the record and and what you what you're here for.
My name is William David Schwartz. Uh, my wife and co-husband is Teddy Kathleen Schwartz. Uh, I'm here because uh I'm kinda getting overcharged on property tax, I think. But I didn't realize that, uh, we moved in here right around Labor Day of two thousand nineteen. And um I did make note on one form here, but I don't think it's yours. Probably the escrow company indicating that uh it was a primary residence. About terminology, I've never bought property before, I've never owned any any dirt. So as I read these tax notices, it would say secondary building, secondary real estate, I honestly thought they meant the little tool shed behind our house. I thought, oh, okay, fine. I didn't know secondary building meant that I don't live here all the time, we do. I have never owned a second home, or I was doing good, get a first home. I uh, we did own the mobile home we lived in in uh LA way back when, but uh when my wife married uh you know, we moved in there, I uh, we got married later in life, you know, care about any of that. So anyway, um, I have, I I'm not sure what triggered me to look into this. I have, I did fill out a form, now uh informing, I'm sorry. My own copy, so if you want one, uh although there's, I did mail that into, I think, the assessor.
Can I see your tax statements?
Yes, please. That's the current or latest one, I don't think we got one for twenty twenty-four. You can see I made notes on it.
Yeah.
And uh comment, the people I talked to here were very helpful, routing me the word, needed to go, what I needed to do. So I appreciate that. In any case, uh certainly going forward, I'd like to I don't know, I lived there all the time.
So have you contacted our uh assessor?
Yes. Uh, yes, that's who the form is for, I think. Um, it says that the place was assessed when we moved in, it seemed to indicate there on the tax form. Um, and it probably was, but there no one inquired about the living circumstance, and I believe the people that owned the place before we did. It it was a secondary or a summer home or cabin if you want. I got a strange idea what cabin is and where the city area. But.
So when did you take residency?
Um probably September first, two thousand nineteen, because we signed the final papers. And then we drove in and, I mean, and got the key and we've lived there ever since.
Full-time?
Full-time. And um
She's uh grabbing, she's trying to grab her.
What's what's the address of this property?
One one eight three South Lakeview Drive. Garden City.
It's uh.
Eight four oh two eight.
It's just below, it's in Bridgeland?
Yeah, it is in Bridgeland, uh uh plot number A five.
Set that ready.
It's ki- kinda next to Bryce Nelson, on that curve.
Bryce lives across the street from me.
Okay.
Dan Cook lives, Double Lords next, I think you know those guys. But uh.
So he's been living there full-time since two thousand nineteen?
Okay.
September of two thousand nineteen.
I wasn't aware, so.
I get the feeling, I had, you know, like I say, I've never bought property and somewhere between the people we were dealing with, me, escrow entitled, they were putting all the papers together, we signed everything, I did not know that the county needed to be notified of our residency. You know, and probably they did.
Yeah, we need to know if you're living there full-time.
Huh, it is probably all with paper, I think paperwork for the crossover, right about the time COVID started, so nobody was having a very good time.
We were all having parties then or?
Oh yeah, it was just wonderful, I just, I look fondly so much back at that, like fondness, no. Hard to believe it even happened.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Well, we can get this taken care of. Also, your residence at the time before you bought it was was probably a secondary home, so.
No, it wasn't.
Before you bought it?
Oh, the, yes, before we bought it, I believe that it was, yes.
So it was on the tax roll at that point in time as a secondary home?
It, yeah, and.
So without you filing a a primary resident form saying that you were gonna be a primary resident, it would have continued on as a secondary resident.
And that's perfectly logical, so I'm pleading for mercy.
Okay, well.
So what do you want me to do instead?
Can you figure out how much he's paid, texted her since then?
Like a rollback, or I mean a a refund back to nineteen?
From twenty twenty, I would, if he moved in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, well, I figured twenty nineteen taxes were done and over by September, I
Yeah, it would be twenty, twenty, seventy, twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Four years, yeah.
Okay, and then you, it looks, it's looks like you have one of these, did you send them to my office?
I did, I I but I I still mailed it because, I know, I I you're probably the one I talked to.
No, I don't believe so.
They sent the form and said you can email it back.
It may have been Genie or Bridget, they work in my office.
Oh, 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 yeah, sure, I can mail it back, why would you what?
Okay, so, so.
We'd still be waiting.
But I should have a copy of that, is that?
Yes, and you may make a further copy of this if you wish.
That would be great, that way I have it, to make sure we.
I I've got both forms, but there's no, nothing on the last, the second one, cause.
Cause you don't have another one.
Don't have another one.
Okay, all right, let me make it, it's gonna take me a little bit on this, so um it's gonna be, and I'm scheduled to come in in about ten more minutes, but I'm not gonna have this done.
That's okay, that's okay, we'll 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 do our action and.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So got a motion on this?
So I'd make a motion that we uh uh adjust the well, we we refund the the taxes from the difference in his property taxes in twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and also twenty twenty-three um from a primary residence, uh or secondary residence to a primary residence.
I'll second that motion. Okay, motions that we refund, we refund Mr. Schwartz the uh his overreach that he's been paying as a secondary home to a primary residence, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll get that and.
She'll let you know the total amount.
Yeah, after she gets it figured, we'll know how much it is.
Okay, you want me to wait here to find out, I'm sure it's gonna happen?
Um, you probably just could go away with Kim, cause she she'd be the one that's gonna know.
Okay.
Exactly.
And I, by form, you you I don't know how you do the rebate, but you can do it as a credit too, I mean, there's still gonna be paying taxes. Uh, what works for you guys?
Um, what do you wanna do with it? We usually just do a a refund, right?
Yeah, I usually just do a check.
Okay. Whatever's simplest for you guys, because I'm grateful.
It's probably better, it's probably better than a credit.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like a can of worms.
It's a little clearer, I think, cleaner, so.
Yeah.
All right, well, um, yeah, so she'll just determine the amount. There you go.
I couldn't help it, I'm sorry.
Um, she'll determine what the amount is and then, but we've approved that amount, so whatever it is, they'll they'll um.
They'll take charge of it.
Just make sense of taking that, you're you're.
Uh, well, I'm not going anywhere, we're just gonna be primary resident tomorrow too.
Right, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Alrighty, thanks for coming in.
I thank you guys, appreciate you very much.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you for your help.
We got Kim next, but she's gone. Mitch, do you wanna come up?
I'm Mitch Pulson, I'm here as the Planning Administrator for the county, and we've got Travis Taylor here as well. So we'll start with um the uh rezone request. Planning and zoning met at the end of January, one of the applications uh that had been submitted for their requ- for their review was a rezone request to change agricultural land uh from ag to AR one for the purpose of building, you know, for a future subdivision. There was uh one, we received one letter, it was just, it was in favor of the uh of the application. I've got a copy of that if you'd be interested in reading it. Uh, we have, in the near vicinity to the immediate south, it's still zoned agriculture. Uh, but then the uh East Lake, the West Lake subdivision is zoned ag, AR one, just like this one's requesting, and then you've got the um Elk is it Elk Hollow or Elk Meadows subdivision to the west, um that's been rezoned to a residential status as well. Um, so, board reviewed it, um it gave a favorable recommendation for uh for approval. Uh Travis wanted to take a, just a minute of your time to get your thoughts, uh maybe give him just a slight nod of uh seems reasonable uh with what he's requesting. His, he's submitted a concept plan for his lot layout, which which requires a a fairly lengthy cul-de-sac, uh to to help rectify that distance, he's proposing a um a connection to the south, which we all know that property is going to develop at some point in the future. Um, it would help create some connectivity and some flow, so instead of just having, you know, one access off of a highway, we're gonna end up with more of a multiple access, um, kind of a configuration. And before he goes too far down that path, he just like some kind of assurance that that seems reasonable. So that is a, it's it's a D property from east to west, and we'd like to be able to use the property. So uh so that that's that's the thought, is that we provide stubs and I guess there's a couple of options, the stubs, uh we could we could just dedicate the property for a future stub, or we could actually just build the stub to the edge of the property. And we're we're open to both, I know that some communities don't want that, asphalt there, some do, we 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 would go either way. The the consideration is just being able to go uh deeper than the eight hundred feet with um with making provision for a stub or or stubs out.
But the stubs are not gonna be connected to anything at this point in time, right?
That's correct.
So they're not really, you know, sorry, they're not really going to be any more than just a stub.
Well, there would be a stub in a in a turnaround, um.
So where's the turnaround?
Well, the, we could do, we we could incorporate the the turnaround. The fire code appendix D allows for different configurations of of uh acceptable turnarounds for fire apparatus, and we could incorporate those in.
At at each stub?
Yes.
So you you'd have enough room on this one to have a turnaround?
Yeah, then, again, those are conceptual, we we're, it's steeper than it looks, and there's a kind of a bowl there that we have to get around. And that's why we've got this steep uh or this switchback thing there, so y- you know, those were conceptual, just to know that it could be done uh within the slope limitations that uh the county has on roads.
Do you, you don't own this property, right?
We do not.
Yes.
Yeah, that the the only thing we have under contract is the piece that you're looking at. So I don't know if that could be, uh, uh, I talked to your engineer and he said, well, it's not, I have the ability to do it, but I'm. It, it's just like up in the air as to who can say yes for sure that this is allowed, so before we close on this and, and. And charge forward, uh, I don't know if it's even allowed to be a, it'd be a weird condition of rezone and, but. E- even if it could be incorporated in somehow, so that I could know that I can, that this is something that I can count on.
And because it's deeper than the eight hundred feet. Um, what does that mean, I mean, you've got a cul-de-sac down there, but no, no other exit? So.
Yeah, the strict interpretation of the code would be, would, would be eight hundred feet. But allowing for those future connections, which I believe would be advantageous to the property to the south, when they come in to develop. Um, would allow us to basically reset at those, uh, connection points. How did, uh, West Lake subdivision get approved? Um, looks like their road is pretty much the same length as what Travis is proposing. I mean, they have that emergency exit at the west end that goes into Elk Hollow, but that's gated and shut down during the winter time.
Well, the, the problem is, is they were to build their road right to the, the property line there.
The West Lake guys were, and they did not?
Eventually. But that was part of the approval, was that they would build right to the property of, of the. Their subdivision would build right to the property of, of Elk Hollow.
Interesting, so they actually built their road a little bit shy of that?
Well, Elk Hollow was going to be the extra, or was gonna be their exit.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, uh, uh, like a permanent exit, or like an emergency exit?
Well. Supposedly they had, the problem was, is that it was supposed to tie into Elk Hollow's road.
Uh-huh.
They never did because of the fact that Elk Hollow, um. That, that exit, that, there's a lot there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So they never did complete their project.
I see. Which would be nice if they did, I get a lot of calls from Bear Lake West about that.
Well, about what?
About, uh, Elk Hollow accessing through the Bear Lake West subdivision and using the Bear Lake West dumpsters.
Yeah, it's.
But I derailed the conversation, I apologize.
Actually, di- discussing, uh, dumpsters, there probably needs to be some area. You, you, cause that, that is such a steep incline, getting a garbage truck up in, in there's gonna be very hard. Um, so probably need to think about a spot where a common dumpster or two could be put.
Yeah, when we get into the plating process, we'll start ferreting out those details, there's a couple of other issues, you know, right now along the frontage, they've got. A number of like power pedestals and various utility types things that. Uh, may create some challenges, not to mention the curvature and elevation of the, the highway as well, but.
Yeah.
So, anyway, all, all things that our, our, uh, agencies will weigh in on.
Yeah, I'm all for property owners trying to like make money with what they have, so I think it looks fine as long as you're within the. Guidelines, you know?
We do have, I've, I've talked to the water guys and, and, and they'll, they'll allow us to extend, it's pretty close there. Uh, they'll allow us to extend the water up there, the sewer runs on the highway in front of the property, electrical's there. There's, so everything's kind of available, at least in the area, so. We, we would be excited to be able to do something on there, but, um, so.
P and C passed it, we're good?
With the rezone, yes. We asked them about the road and they just kinda gave a, a nod that, you know, that, I don't know, it was an unofficial thing. Pretty, it was pretty, uh, non-committal. It was non-committal, it's like, yeah. We'll see it when it comes in and platformed. Yeah. But, but I can't rely on that, I mean, I kinda need to know that, that, that. That these stubs are, are okay, that we can proceed forward with that.
Well, didn't you, you said they're big enough to turn an ambulance and a fire truck around, or?
Yeah, we, well, again, these were kinda just conceptual, but we could make those to where they comply with the emergency turnaround. There's a, there's an alternative hammerhead, you can do a cul-de-sac, there's, uh, an L shape, th- there's different, the fire code allows. Different options, it's got pictures of them at the bottom, and you just. You, you just pick from those. So these alternatives, they could be implemented at these, uh, stub points. Right. Until the stub points are then developed to the south, at which time they could then be terminated. I'm, I'm talking about incorporating the design into the stub. Oh, are you? Yeah, so the stub would actually be a part of the hammerhead, so I, I think what you're saying is. You would encumber somebody's front yard for a while, yeah, I, I don't really wanna do that, I would just. Make it permanent, okay? Make it permanent, yeah.
Okay. I think if you're willing to do that kinda thinking, then it's probably likely that something like this would be, would go through.
Uh, how do I? How do I get it from likely to, if, if I were to do that, then this, we, this could be approved, this would be approved. I, is it, is it possible to do it as a condition of approval for the rezone, that. That, that the stubs would be allowed, I'd be able to go beyond the eight hundred feet? If, if I were to incorporate turnaround, uh, configurations from the fire code in those. And that it be constructed to the property line, something like that.
Well. The bottom line is, the code says eight hundred feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
Without having a, an exit.
Right.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, even with these, it does not give. Uh, you know, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't give an exit.
Mm-hmm.
And that was, that was the deal with West Lake, it was that they were to tie in to, to the, the road up there. And then when he got his, he, he didn't do it, all he did was put his cul-de-sac in, and then he didn't wanna do it because he didn't want them coming down through his property.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So he was actually out of compliance.
Mm-hmm.
And so we forced him at the very end to tie in to their property as an emergency exit and as sanitation removal. That's what we finally ended up having to do, much to his dismay, and he still blames that on you.
Me? What did I do? We would, uh, when we brought this into platting, we would, we would show that as dedicated. Property all the way to the property line, so it would be a public dedication, and then we would bond or build. Pro- either, either bond it prior to recording the plat, or build it and then record the plat. Um. Uh, those, those turnarounds and out to the property line, so. Uh, that could easily be incorporated in the guarantee, so that we don't have, you're not, you're not. You're not having to trust me that we'll do it, there's actually financial guarantees that it'll be done.
Well, still doesn't answer the question of it's over eight hundred feet and our code says eight hundred feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
So to, to say, you know, go ahead, you're fine, I mean, that's, that's against the code.
Mm-hmm.
So a- as far as a promise goes, you know, I mean, especially where you don't. I mean, it'd be a whole different thing if you owned this piece of property over here and you, you're, you had another.
Another phase.
Another phase there that you could show that, you know, as that phase went in, you would have egress. But, you know, you put a fire right here, you know, where do those people go?
Yeah, I, I, I get what you're saying, I, I think.
Because even, even here, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't get them out, you know?
Yeah. Yes. A- as, as far as the code goes and the eight hundred feet, y- you know, eight, eight, eight hundred feet, I, I'm not sure how that came about. It, ev- every community has different lengths, and it's.
I agree.
For different reasons, whatever historically it's, it's been, I, I do believe that it's an interpretation of the code, whether that. Cul-de-sac would be able to be reset after those turnarounds, that, that eight hundred foot length would be able to be reset, so it is an interpretation. Uh, that we're asking to be interpreted this way. So, yes, you're correct, we don't own that piece of property to the south, it would be different if it was being brought in as another phase, but. Uh, we don't control it. Have you made an attempt to contact them and see if they'd be interested? Uh, yeah, our land guy has, I, I believe they live in Pocatello somewhere, he's knocked on their door, tried to get ahold of them in several different ways. And have not had luck. Pocatello, I can't remember where he said it, but. Yeah, so in my mind, it would be a matter of defining what that cul-de-sac length, where that. Where that eight hundred foot starts, right now, if I just built a plain cul-de-sac off the highway, it'd be, you know, eight hundred feet, but if I provide stubs out. I believe that we have the ability to interpret that to being reset at that, at those stubs. But if I could vote, I'd say yes. My vote doesn't count very much. But you say you weren't able to get in contact with them? No, he hasn't been able to reach them yet. Well, cause it looks like that's who your adjacent property, the, the letter that came back from the adjacent properties, who are really positive about this. Uh, were in favor of it, and you got an email address and you got a phone number now. Oh, perfect, thank you. From the director of the St. George Temple Visitor Center. But maybe why we can't? Get ahold of them.
Man, I need that.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were giving that to me, let me just take a picture of it then.
You can get a copy if you need a copy.
Well, I, I'm good with making a motion for the rezone, but I'm very uncomfortable about making any promises about. About saying we can. Where our code says eight hundred feet, what? You know, because of the fact that, I mean, you know, it's kinda like the West Lake thing, it was a pretty nasty thing, and we approved that. Because the only reason we approved that was so he could. Because it was more than eight hundred feet, but he was tying also into Elk Hollow as an emergency exit, and then when it got all said and done, he didn't put the. He didn't put the cul-de-sac in and left, left a gap there. And we finally forced him to put it in because we're out of compliance, but.
So is that, did you make a motion?
I'd make a motion, no, when we approve the rezone, yeah.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion on the table that, uh, we rezone it to residential one, is that right?
Ag residential one.
Ag.
AR one, residential one.
Ag residential one, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carried.
Yeah, I'd say, I would just challenge you to work with your neighbors and see what you can come up with.
How come, can't we get, uh, hook tie into the north?
It's, there's no clear path for that.
It's everybody's backyard.
And there's no, there's, it'd be a lot, and, and they won't allow their, they won't allow a lot for in, egress, egress. That's exactly what happened up here with Elk Hollow as well.
There's vacant land on the east end of Bear Lake West that's not been subdivided, but it would make, uh. The, uh, circulation of traffic a little bit odd. Well, I think we're seventeen hundred feet, I can't remember how deep we are, but it's, it's, it's pretty deep.
Yeah, it's, it runs up there quite a way, it's right to the canal.
Yes, yep.
And it is, it's steep right along in there?
Yep.
Um, I was asked to go. Well, two years ago, how long have you owned that?
We, we have it under contract, so we, we have it closed, that's why.
Okay.
In order to close, I kinda.
Yeah, the landowner, and I don't know whether it was both landowners, asked me two years ago if I would go in and. And harvest the grass off of it, so it wasn't such a, a fire hazard, but as I walked up through there, it was like, I'm not taking my machine in there, so.
Just that's steep, huh?
Well, that's deep and it's rocky and there's.
It's rough.
It's, it's kinda rough to, you know, but.
It'd, it'd beach it wouldn't help.
Yeah, that's the thing, you know, I'd do a lot more damage than it would be benefit for me. So I, I mean, I understand the terrain there, so. But I also understand that, like I say, if you have a fire there, how does these people, how do they get out, I mean. You know, I mean, that's, that's the real. That's the real safety issue that we've gotta look at, um, and that's one of the reasons we have ordinances, so.
Yeah, or if somebody slides and clogs the road during winter time, how do the kids get down to school and things like that?
That would never happen.
Um, you know. I don't think we're in a position where we can make any promises, I think what, you know, and I, and I get what you're saying, I certainly do, but. You know, our ordinances are the way they are, um, rather these. These two cul-de-sacs are, whatever you wanna make them, I mean, certainly, I would, if it was me, I certainly would make those deeded. Uh, you know, so they're, they're, they're there to be able to access, um.
Right.
Anything into the future, I would certainly make them as, so it's not just a, an easement across the lot, because. That runs into prob- problems going down the, going down the road as well, so I would make them deeded for sure, but.
I, I agree with that, yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, dig it, guys. Go out on that limb for me.
I think you can figure it out, I think you can figure it out.
Well, I appreciate this, having the contact information, so.
Take a road up one side and bring it down the other.
Yeah, that's pretty tough, we could, with the s- with the steepness of this, we can barely fit.
Yeah.
And, and you know, that's the thing, this, this part down here is a lot more level than it is up here, your, your strip up there, so, um. You know, and it, and it may be that they would allow you to have a, an entrance of some kind there.
It's possible.
And if that's the case, then, you know, that certainly, um, gives you the.
And really, all that needs to be is.
An, an, an emergency exit, yeah, yeah. Yeah, not as a, not as a travel road as part of your subdivision, but an emergency exit, that would provide. Uh, the opportunity for anything that happened for them to. To be able to, to get out, so.
Yeah, yeah, good. Okay. Thanks for, thanks for hearing me out.
You got your. You got your rezone now, you know, plan B, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is to discuss the plat amendment submitted by, uh, Jack Betty, Jack and Becky Betty. Um, these are becoming pretty routine, um, anymore, they own, uh, two lots in the Swan Creek Village Phase Two. So lots thirty eight and thirty nine, and they have a house built on one lot and a garage built on the other. And they just wanted to combine those two lots, much like we've seen in several other instances in, in the Swan Creek subdivision. Um, the engineer has reviewed this and found it's consistent with our, uh, with our ordinances and requirements. Um, we have, the planning commission, uh, had a public hearing on it at the last meeting, and recommended, um, approval of the, um. Uh, the plat amendment for lots thirty eight and thirty nine, and also the vacation of public utility easement between the two lots. And that's kind of a critical component.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and, and approve the plan amendment.
Second that.
Okay, motion to approve the final amendment. Combining thirty eight, thirty nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and make sure the minutes reflect that it's also a public utility abandonment as well, public utility easement abandonment.
I'm gonna go to the bathroom real quick, you guys can. I have a conflict of interest on this next quarter anyway, so, I mean, I'm about to, you know, pass.
Make sure the minutes reflect that.
And vacation of public utility event.
Perfect. Public utility easement abandonment.
Easement of, public utility abandonment.
Yeah, it's a mouthful.
Instead of vacation.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
So John recused himself, or is that a problem, or just explain that conflict?
Neither one. No. He, he just said he had a conflict of interest, but he had to use the bathroom, so.
One of both.
That's not. He did probably.
Okay, so, the, uh, Rich County Economic Development Advisory Board, uh, met a couple of weeks ago to review the applications that have been submitted. Uh, for that funding, and what I have, what's in front of you right now is a summary of all the applications that were submitted, um, how much they asked, how much, uh, the match. Or, that they could, uh, contribute, and then how much they were awarded. Um, and I'd like to make it known, you know, before we started, um, Sean Millen did a really great job of, of explaining, you know, his position in relation to the Economic Development Board. And the state, um, you know, this, this, the, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, he refers to it as GOEO. Um, and just what they want to see out of, um, you know, out of the money that they get, he, uh, really emphasized the need to have, um. Return on investment shown, um, and it looks like we're heading in the right direction by the way that we allocate these monies. Um, the board referred back to the bylaws, um, numerous times on, you know, the, the items that we can, um. Apply the money to, which is number one, business recruitment, development, and expansion, two, workforce training and development, and then three, infrastructure, industrial building development, and capital facilities improvements for business development. Which is what most people are submitting for, they want some kind of asset or something that will help them to grow their, their individual businesses, so we'll walk down through these, um. The, the summary and, uh, discuss them individually. Um, overarching, one of the things that was interesting this time around that people applied for was vehicles, and for the most part, the board did not, um, did not approve those requests. The first one was from Farm Bureau, um, they requested twenty thousand dollars to hire additional employee, uh, the board did not, uh, feel that was. In, it felt, they felt it was inconsistent with the, uh, the objective of the program, and it do- did not award them anything. They felt that if they gave them twenty thousand this year, that what's going to stop them from coming back for, you know, once they've hired an employee, for coming back for another twenty thousand, it just, it seemed to perpetuate. Um, into the future. Uh, Crepes and Coffee requested, uh, twenty thousand dollars for a, a significant facility upgrade, their total project cost is going to be over a million dollars. Um, so they gave the full ask on that. Uh, Let's Construction requested eighteen thousand dollars for a, to lease a new loader for snow removal. Um, and given the winter that we've had, there was a little bit of hesitancy there, um, and, and also where it's a lease. Now, they did feel comfortable, if this is like a five-year lease, they did feel more comfortable with that, if it's just a one-year lease, they just didn't feel like that was, um. That was, that was worth, um, granting money for, but they, they did allocate sixteen thousand.
If it's three or more years.
Yeah, if it's a, if it's a longer-term lease. Um, Argyle Saddle, uh, they requested twenty thousand dollars for a portable livestock chute, uh, and Tub Alley, the board alloc- uh, um, allocated ten thousand to that. Um, Oso Blue, um, they requested, uh, ninety-five hundred dollars to purchase a small truck for various tasks. Again, the board didn't feel like, uh, vehicles were within the purview of the program. Um, Lugging Stuff requested, uh, thirty-eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the board gave them a full ask on that because it is for. Pool and hot tub cleaning equipment, they felt like that's a value-added, um, type of business, uh, for our community and something that's necessary. Uh, Somebody and Pizza requested thirteen thousand six hundred and nine, uh, for a dough mixer, uh, they received the full ask on that. Uh, Dot Bar requested twenty thousand dollars, uh, for general equipment improvement and routers, uh, for future customers, and the board, um. Required, or gave them ten thousand for that. Uh, Tiffany Wahlberg requested seventy-three hundred and fifty dollars for an automated billing machine, uh, that was granted as a full ask. Uh, Rukas, uh, requested twenty thousand dollars to finish their housing, uh, and provide some tables and chairs for their facility, uh, they were. Uh, not granted anything for, for that. Crawford Truff.
They, because they had received money for that same thing prior.
Right, and not finished the, and not finished the project. Uh, Crawford Truff had requested ninety-five hundred dollars, and that's what they were granted, and that's to help replace shingles in their heating and air conditioning units on their. Uh, on their rental cabins, uh, Pickleville Playhouse requested twenty thousand dollars, or twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, for heating for their dressing rooms, they felt like that would help to extend their, uh, their season. Um, Pickleville's kind of a, is an anchor business anymore, a lot of people come here for it, it's, uh, pretty popular. Uh, Chad's, uh, Chad's Raspberries, they requested. Uh, a thousand dollars, no, they requested three thousand dollars, and, uh, weren't given any on that one. Some Beaches requested sixty-five hundred dollars for a reach-in upright freezer, and they were given the sixty-five hundred for that. Uh, Payne Photography requested twenty-eight hundred dollars for photo equipment, and, and they have asked for, al- almost every year that we've had the, uh, application process in place. They've requested something, and so because it's, you know, they've asked every year, um, they were, they did not grant that request this year. Uh, Zuma Prints requested twenty thousand dollars, and were given ten, and that's for T-shirt equipment and, um, hat making. Uh, Bear Lake Boutique requested ten, or, yeah, requested ten thousand, uh, they were not given any. Uh, Epic Recreation requested twenty thousand dollars for an LED sign, uh, they were not given anything. Bear Lake Funtown requested ninety-five hundred dollars for a used oil heater, uh, for their new building that they are bringing in, they were granted five thousand. Uh, the Burger Barn requested twenty thousand, they were given ten, that's for a covered awning, they discovered that, uh. People aren't real big fans of eating outside all the time, and it would help their business in the shoulder seasons if they had a little bit of coverage for, for their customers. Uh, the Bear Lake Chamber requested twenty thousand dollars for a twenty-six-foot enclosed trailer, uh, they were granted five. Uh, Cody's Gastro Garage was gr- requested ten thousand two hundred and fifty, they were granted five thousand dollars for a food truck and outdoor patio furniture. Uh, Waters Edge requested fourteen hundred dollars for spa equipment, they were, they were granted their full ask. The Bear Lake Candy Company requested four thousand dollars, um, and they were granted two thousand dollars, and that's to help expand their toy selection. Uh, Fusion Eighty-Nine requested twenty thousand, and were given ten thousand dollars, and this is for random upgrades, uh, to their existing facility, including a signboard installation. Uh, which will improve, uh, efficiency in their, their drive-through. Um, let's see, Epic Getaway requested twenty thousand dollars, and that was for a fuel-efficient multi-use vehicle. Again, not granted, TMH Services, ten thousand dollars for a vehicle, um, again, not granted. Um, and Cody Christensen, uh, requested, uh, twenty thousand dollars for a, uh, a horseshoeing shed. Uh, and we had an application last year from. Not gonna be able to remember his name, but it was. Derek, oh Derek Kuffaker, that's right, uh, for a, um, for a training facility, and since that did not get used, we rolled that money to this year. Uh, to be used for this horseshoeing barn. And Commissioner, you made contact with Derek to verify that that was legitimate. So all in all, that, that totals, um, an, uh, an award amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-six. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty-five thousand and change, uh, to grant this year, a hundred and sixty-five because, uh, ten thousand comes from me. Uh, you know, for my administrative services, and then we had twenty thousand dollars for an economic development study, and then it was another five thousand. Uh, for something I wasn't very familiar with.
Brag.
It was for brag. Are there any questions?
I can't vote, but I would like to say, I think if, if somebody doesn't use their money, we, that it should be plugged, um, for. The chamber to help with their trailer, because the chamber is a huge driver, I mean, Winterfest was awesome.
So you're saying if people are, don't use their full allocation, we had to move that.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I can't vote on it, but that's, that would be my suggestion as far as a secondary person, you, you know, that we would help if, if money's not spent.
The discussion on that was, and I'm not saying either way, cause, you know, I kinda agree with you, where they are driving force. But the discussion that night was. You can throw what they have in the back of a pickup, to take it to somewhere, so why do we need to buy a trailer? That was a discussion.
Or such a lengthy trailer.
Or a long, yeah, a big twenty, whatever.
Twenty-six foot, they could deal with probably something a little bit short.
All they have is bouncy houses and a few things like that, and.
And a tent and some stuff.
It was thr- it was just mentioned that they could throw in a pickup and, from the. Storage to get it there.
Well, I, I, I think the town of Garden City is storing it for them, so. Um, the other thing is, is they would like, you know, a trailer to put it in, so they don't have to go get it and keep putting it back, but.
Probably like to segregate their stuff from.
Click on to it and take it to wherever they need it, like out to the marina, wherever, and not have to bring it back and store it, but Garden City is storing it for them, so.
And that, so that is, that's probably a good idea.
That way you know automatically, this money hasn't been spent, let's call them up and offer it to them.
And there'll be money that won't be used, always is.
How's it going, Sean?
Welcome. Man, what a white-knuckle drive that was from Ogden. Especially in a little commuter, it's days like today, I miss my F-one-fifty.
Yeah.
Anyway, good morning.
Was it snowing, north of there?
Really?
Bad?
It was, uh, I was grateful for the semis that created some recognition that there was pavement underneath the snow.
Really?
Yeah.
Down Logan Canyon?
Uh, I was down in Salt Lake, so I came up through Ogden to Evanston. From here to Evanston was pretty good, it was from Evanston, from the mouth of the canyon, that was pretty rough.
How about that?
Anyway, I don't mean to disrupt the flow, I've obviously come in midstream, but, uh.
Yeah, we started scot-free.
What's that?
I, I'm Tyler, I'm the building inspector.
Okay, so where, you came up that way too?
Yeah.
Okay.
How long ago?
Oh, fifteen minutes ago.
So, am I right, or?
Yeah, well, you're kind.
That's why I asked, cause he was shaking his head yes when we were talking about it.
I was in a truck, so.
There was moments I thought I was gonna end up in a ditch, I'm like, oh geez. Anyway.
So.
So I guess I'm wondering, when someone already does a project or already has some equipment. Um. If they've, if they've already bought this and then applied for the money. What, I mean, is there any criteria that?
They usually don't get money if they've already purchased it.
Yeah, we don't, we don't know that, ex- with the exception of the, uh, the TMH Service, they, TMH Services, they indicated in their grant application, they'd already purchased the vehicle. And the board's like, we're not compensating for an already purchased vehicle.
Okay.
Let alone a vehicle.
Okay.
So, but, but none of these other things are, we're aware of that have already been purchased, cause it's supposed to be on an invoice basis, right, we look at the dates on the invoice.
Commissioner, to your question, if I could just offer this, I absolutely think that.
Is he already called that? It's not till he's out for two years.
The, the CEO board did a great job, but GOEO does not correct to see this as stockgap, so you guys have approached this the same sort of way. Absent of that, they, they don't have any regulations. They just, you know, they would prefer to go to something that'll fall out, that they couldn't break out.
Okay, I'm gonna make the recommendation to go ahead and make a motion to approve what's been recommended by the GOEO board.
C- CEO board, totally different board, CEO.
Well, or C about sort of CEO board.
Sorry, Commissioner, just trying to.
No, I, I appreciate it correctly.
I can't vote, so you'll have to step down.
You, you mentioned, so I'll step down and second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And you put in the minutes.
John recused?
Yeah.
Commissioner, can I ask the question that I think I caught, but I'm not sure? Is your concern that someone pre-purchased something long ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
The decision's been made, I waited until after.
No, that's fine, we'll, you know, I, I, we went ahead and approved it, I mean, I, I, there's several on here that I disapprove of, of what was done, but. Um, you guys vetted, the, uh, the board vetted those applications, and. Um, I will say that, you know, there's, there's some that I, I'm a little concerned about, but. It is what it is, and I think we'll refine the prod- the process maybe for another year.
That was what I was gonna ask, with Chairman being on the CEO board, perhaps this is one of those things to take back to. To the CEO board and just let them know the commission's feelings about what should constitute, and, you know, and you guys did such an excellent job in the one meeting I've now attended that.
Well, I, you know, and I think we need to look at, at, at who's been funded in the past and who hasn't, and, um. You know, there's, there's at least three on here that's been funded before. And why are we continuing to fund them when there's other, that maybe this would be a good place for them to get started from?
Mm-hmm, uh, and I did bring that up, that there were a number that have, have received grants year after year after year, and some of them they discontinued, and some the board. Uh, continue to recognize, so, but we can take that back and encourage.
So let's have a. Next year, let's have a yellow marker.
On the, on the ones that are repeats?
Or even a question on the, on the forum saying, how much money have you received from this fund already?
Prior.
Cause Bill's right, there's gonna be a couple that are pretty heavily funded.
Well, you've got funded twice, John, for your company, I mean.
And I still don't think I'm.
You know.
Close to the top.
Well, but, but you've applied twice for your company, in both kinds, your company's been, been, been funded, um, you know, uh. Cody's has been funded, Burger Barn's been funded.
Yeah, that was, that was mentioned.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I, my personal opinion.
Probably eighty percent of these have been funded, actually.
So, you know, I mean, but I didn't, I didn't, wasn't in a meeting and I didn't review every one of them, so, I mean, that's what I'm saying, but we made the recommendation, we passed it, and we'll move on. Recommendation for next year is look at those that have been funded before.
Sounds good, we'll, we'll convey that to the board, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thanks Commissioners.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Can we, wonder? Let's get Tyler, let's, let's do Tyler. I mean, then he can get, whether he needs to do building inspections or head back.
Come on up, Tyler.
Come on up, Tyler.
I'm Sam, I've never met you, right, face to face to me, and John, John? Have I met you before?
I'm in Easton.
Nice to meet you. Have I met you before? Okay.
Jeffrey, do you wanna get on the screen here?
Um, it's, do you, do you, I mean, you saw the PowerPoint, what do you think, I probably can't, cause I don't have my, uh.
I have an HDMI cord.
This one has the, the.
I may have an adapter for you.
It's this.
USB-C.
Yeah, which that works.
No, I don't, I'm gonna do.
I'm using it. Do you have, do you have the email?
Yeah, I could, I could share it with these guys.
It's really simple, but.
I guess maybe you could share with Bill, sort of turn it, and I'll share with Sam.
Or, or does that have HDMI on it?
Oh, yeah.
We don't have the right stuff.
We, he's, he can hook.
You can plug into this one. If it, if it can reach, I can.
Yeah.
Check on my tabs real quick.
Turn off.
That's all it was.
Yes, source and then. Maybe.
Must not be on the right source.
So, um. I think it was one. One?
Yeah, that's HDMI, no, it's three.
It's three?
Yep.
Okay. Turn it on into this guy. Oh yeah, you have it pulled, I forget you have it pulled up, I was like, why is it not on the right page? There we go, okay, so yeah, introduction, I'm the building inspector, you guys probably hear, I don't know, good things and bad things, I'm sure. It's uh, there's always, being a building inspector, I, I, there's always days where you just don't make someone happy. Um, it's, it's part of the job and, and uh, and learning how to handle that is, is a big part of it, um. I, I, I like to look at myself as someone that doesn't, uh, that tries really hard to see the big picture. Um, obviously, the things that I, uh, that the building code makes people do can be very expensive and. And so recognizing that in the beginning is, is a, is an important part of, of my job, so. Um, so hopefully, you guys have heard uh, uh, good things, um, I try to, try to operate that way and try to be more of a consultant side of. Things and explaining people why we do the, the things we do, so. Okay, so this last year, this is the, this is the year of twenty twenty-three, um, we did eight hundred and seventy-eight inspections. Um, and that's, that's give or take a little bit on each permit. Um, estimation, you do about ten inspections on a house. Um, that's definitely the line share of, of the inspections that are happening are on residential.
So, let me talk you right there, so out of those eight hundred and seventy-eight, how many are Garden City, how many are County?
Ooh, um, I don't have a breakdown of that, so I'd be estimating a little bit, but I'm gonna say probably. Probably down in the valley, they're probably about, I'm gonna say probably eighty or ninety percent. So, we have, let's see, I mean, I can count them on quickly.
It's okay, it's, it's, it's okay.
I have about, I have about eight houses going up, up here. I think a couple of them are finished, but. So, and then, so these are, in two thousand and three, these are new permits that were issued, a hundred and eight. Um, so, that range is specifically, it's again, it's mostly houses, um, and then you're gonna get your, your ag buildings and then. We've had a, a few commercial, um, permits, but uh, not very many, there's been a, just, just a handful.
This is the whole county?
Well, it's, it's not Garden City, this doesn't count for anything.
So this is anything but Garden City?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yep. Okay, so total bu- building permit fees, uh, the county charges for the, just for the permit, okay? So this is, this is the straight off the top amount for building permits, there's no impact fees or anything else added in there, cause. Those are all collected in different air, different avenues. Oh, I think it might have skipped one. Maybe it didn't, now let's see, okay, um, the one, uh, the one thing that I. I, I didn't, I'm glad that I'm sitting in front of all you guys, I'm curious. If you guys are familiar with the plan review side of things that happens before a permit's issued. And the state law, I put the state law on there, cause I want you to know that this is, this is across the board. The jurisdictions are charging a plan, a plan's examination fee before the permit even goes out. Um, and the state law allows for up to sixty-five percent of the permit fee, so. Example, if you have a, I'm terrible at math, so, I didn't, if you have a thousand dollar permit. Then the jurisdiction would actually get sixty-five percent more of that for a plan review, to review the permit, to cover the costs associated with. The building with, uh, with Eugene and with Camille and all the things that they do, so. I, I'm surprised that that's not being charged, um, and I'm curious if that's something that you guys are aware of, or if it was a decision that was made in the past that it was like. No, we, we don't wanna do that, and that's totally fine, I'm just, I'm bringing it to your attention, cause I think it's something that you should consider if you haven't.
So, let me, let me s- explain this a little more, so, um. A thousand dollar permit and then a portion of that, uh, up to sixty-five percent could be charged on top of that for a plan review.
Yep.
And you would do the plan review?
Yeah, and I, and, and now, I already am doing it, so this is already part of what's happening with the permit fee. Um, I, I'm just saying it, cause I, I feel like. A- and I'm not trying to revenue grab, cause that is the last thing you try to do as a jurisdiction, but what I am saying is, is there's a pretty good chunk of money being left on the table that is. A hundred percent fair in state law for the county to collect. Um, now, is there a, a given play here, yeah, like. In a lot of the jurisdictions I work for in residential, they only do twenty-five percent plan review, cause they don't, they feel like it's to the residents of the community, they don't wanna charge that amount. So they're charging only twenty-five percent or twenty percent, um, in commercial, the standard is sixty-five percent almost, and, and. All the jurisdictions that I'm in, they're charging that, um, and I could do a report and send it to you guys and show you the different jurisdictions. I'd be surprised if there's anyone in the state that doesn't charge something for the plan review, um, and it's really a matter of, that's. The, the flexibility from the state laws, it's allowing you guys to make a decision based off of. Really the cost that you feel like is associated with it, so.
But they should do that. Is there, th- there's no option for towns to, since you, since you're the county building inspector, a town can't collect this type of money?
Um, so that's a, that's actually a super good discussion, so I think Lake Town is a really good example of this. Um, I don't know how aware you might be, cause you live there, right? But there, they have a storage facility that's been presented to the city or the town, and it's been just a mess. In, in all general, and they've, they've had me really involved in the whole process, who's paying for that? So, I, i- i- in, and when this permit gets issued, they're gonna pay for it, because I'm at, I've actually added in an administrative cost that's additional. And they're gonna pay for that, because I feel like the county shouldn't be paying for that, I feel like the county should be collecting that and. Recouping it for, for fees that have been charged for the review that I've done. Um, I've reviewed it and gone through it, but that's why, why I say that is because. That Lake Town isn't collecting anything, but they're having me do additional.
Are you saying Lake Town will pay for it, or, or the per- the?
Oh, the person, the, the.
Storage ship people?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of similar to, like, if an applicant came in here and they, they had an engineer, or we had an engineer review, cause it was. Specialized and it needed to be reviewed, who's paying for that, you, obviously you wouldn't want the, the community to pay for that with tax dollars. You would want that developer or the builder, whoever to pay for it, because. Quite frankly, if the ground sat as green space, it would be just fine for you, it wouldn't change your opinion of it, right, unless it's your own property.
Are you, uh, well, this is just, is, is Garden City charging a plan review?
Yeah. Yep, Garden City charges, um, on commercial, it's, it's sixty-five percent and on residential, it's twenty-five percent. And then, and Garden City has a, a couple other, uh, fees that they've implemented as administrative fees. Um, like, they, they have like an inspection fee that's charged and, so they, and then, and then, again, it goes back to. What the city council in that case wants, you know, wants to cover the costs associated with what the work is being done.
Yeah. Um, where your costs aren't even close to exceeding what we're collecting, I feel like. Increasing the cost would, would be, there's no point, you know, we, it's a barrier of entry that we shouldn't create as, but. Who knows, I mean, that needs more, more discussion, I, I had no clue that this even existed.
Yeah, I was curious if you guys had, had seen it before and if it was something. I, I think, I think you kinda, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I really like, I'm not showing you this, cause it's gonna pack my wallet, it doesn't do anything like that. Cause it's a hundred percent, it's like I'm changing, charging the same fee no matter what it, the review is. Um, and, and quite frankly, like, you, I mean, you saw the amount that was last year, was, what was it, two hundred and ninety-six thousand or something? Or two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so, yeah, I didn't, I didn't bill that much. I don't even know if I was, what, ten percent of that maybe?
Yeah.
No, I was a little bit more than that, but yeah.
A hundred and sixty on top of that, you know, we're collecting.
Yep.
Four hundred thousand bucks.
But you, and that, and that really comes back down to, you know, getting into like the general fund, is there, is there. Are there aspects of what's going on right now in here, like, I think Camille's part-time, so, like if she had to advance into a full-time role. It's very easy to, to justify like an administrative cost in the building department for what work she does in there. To add additional money there, but not actually had to affect your general fund, it would actually make the general fund come up, so.
Yeah. Well, and I see it as maybe helping sanitation of anything, you know, and, and police. Um, since the growth drives, has a direct correlation to, to that, but I, I don't know.
Just a comment from the state of Garden City, so, you know, in Garden City now, we're, we're pushing for full-time employees just in the office, just because of all the growth and their deep growth. So it offsets those costs, it doesn't go back to the taxpayers. Deft offset that, you know, it's more public works department, it's more, so it just helps offset those costs, so it doesn't go back into. Just the general taxpayers happen to pay for that. So, it really does help when it comes to, comes to those things.
That's a good point.
Yeah, and, and I recognize, it's, it's kinda like the agricultural building side of things, like. You have the right to charge for an agricultural building permit. Now, the way that Rich County has it established is that, that's not something that you wanna charge for, which I think's great, like, that's fantastic. Um, and, and it, and you, you feel as, as commissioners, that that's, that that's gonna benefit the agricultural side of things, which is what this community is mostly made up of. Um, and so, i- it's really like this plan review side of things is really, it's a matter of, is this going to benefit the residents of the city? To charge them, or is it gonna benefit them more to not have it on there and just keep it as is? And I, cause you, cause, I mean, I, I think we, we are all seeing, like, it looks like there's enough money in there to, to cover what the building department needs, or at least. Their basic needs of it, um, and so it's a matter of, I think it's. If, if there's a need for that additional collection or not, for garbage, sanitation, um, you know, what, whatever it may be.
So, on the process, um, walk, walk me through the process, so somebody calls you and says. You know, I wanna, I wanna build a house, so. Go through the, the steps of that process if you would.
So the first and foremost, I'm probably gonna have a conversation, find out where it is. Um, and decide if it's, if it needs to go to planning zoning or not. Um, and then if, if everything's good there, then I'm, uh, my first initial direction is probably gonna send them to an HOA. Cause that's usually, most of the places that we're, we're dealing with are gonna be in an HOA, so sending them to that group. And then, and then letting them know that I can do the building permit at the same time, but I just have to have that full approval before. Um, and then, and then directing them to the website, which is where they're gonna submit their ber- their building permit application. Um, and then that application is pinged to me, to my email, and then I, I do a review process, which, which means I'm reviewing it for code compliance on the building. Making sure that they have all their, their required, so if they, if they have septic system, or if it's connected to sewer water, HOA. Um, survey, making sure that that lines up to what their site plan is showing that they want, just the basic stuff, and then. And then reviewing the, the actual like engineering of the, of the permit and make sure that it meets the snow load and wind load and all that, that's required. So, so it's a, a good question, it's probably, uh, on a give and take, I think you're probably looking at. You're, you're roughly, depending on the person, that's a little bit of a hard part, is, I mean, I get some people where it's like really easy, maybe they do it every day. And then I get on other ones where they've never done it, and I'm on the phone with them in the beginning for a long time, working through it. Um, but I think average is usually around three, three hours-ish to do it, maybe four, depending on what size the house is. And then, if they have. I don't know, I would say, it's getting a little bit better, but seventy-five, eighty percent of the permits that I have submitted, I have to. Send them comments back and say, I need more information, so.
How many site visits, physical visits do you typically do?
So, before a permit's issued, or, or.
From the beginning to the end?
Uh, so, u- usually you're about, you're typically around ten times, unless you have trouble. I have a house right now that I've pretty sure I went to their four-way seven times, which is, do you know what a four-way is?
No, I don't.
So four-way is like when the house is at the rough stage, so it's just been framed and they have their electrical plumbing and mechanical all rough. And going through that inspection can be.
They're just having a hard time?
Yep. Yep.
So, when you say you're pinged, so they go to the website, they fill out a permit and you're pinged, who gets, so does the permit? Is that, that comes into the treasurer's office, I guess, with Camille?
Yep.
And at that point in time, what does she do with it?
She probably isn't doing much with it at all, um, she might get a couple phone calls, maybe if they're asking about it, but.
Who determines the amount of the fee?
Uh, so I'm doing the, the fee, com- uh, and then, I think Camille or Eugene is, before it's paid, it has to be paid here and they're. They're reviewing it to make sure it's, it's correct. And it's based off of the, the square footage and then their, their valuation of what they determine. So like in, in the Garden City area, we have the Garden City fire, uh, fee that is added on as well, the impact fee.
So when you, if we did, um, if it, we did this plan review fee, that would be just included in the actual fee for the, the.
Paid at the same time?
Yep.
As the permit.
Yeah, I have a, a, like a new line item that would say, plan review fee.
Do you have people that, that underestimate the value of what they're doing to try to save on the permit?
Yeah, you, so, so I have, so I have a, a, a fee table that I can go through with the square footage, so like the construction type and the fees. And the square footage and the occupancy type, residential, a lot more simple, but, and then I can go on square footage and put a calculation in and it'll tell me what. Roughly it should be.
Hundred thousand low.
Yep, and that, that fee table is updated every six months, um, and so it's, it's trying to follow the market, and I've seen it drop a little bit, it's always. Obviously climbing, but that's how that, I, if I'm, if I feel like they're way off, you can tell pretty quick, you know, they're building a thirty-four hundred square foot home for two hundred grand.
Yeah, so John, just don't be trying to play that.
Nope. Yeah, and, any other questions on it?
Well, I, I just have to say, um, since you've come on board, um, I've had lots of positive comments about. The whole process and, um, being able to get questions answered and your onsite visits have been, you know, I mean, you're. I, I, I don't take this, you know, too far, but that you've been really pleasant to work with and, and have been. You know, very, um, you, you know what you're doing, but you've also, you know, are very good to work with people and making sure that what they're doing is right, but. You know, in the long run, um, you know, it's a win-win, they feel good about what they're, what they're doing, but you're making them sure that they're within. Their code that they need to be, so.
Thank you.
I just wanna compliment you on, from my standpoint, at the many, um, compliments that, hey, you know. You, we've got a great building inspector now and, and things are, you know, he was really good to work with, so.
No, I, I appreciate it, I, um, I mean, I, I have just a quick background, I don't know how much you know about me, Sim, maybe. But I, I, I started out as a, as a building inspector for West Haven City, um, and, and just. Was, was realizing quickly that there was quite a need for, for cities that maybe didn't have a building inspector, couldn't find one. And so I started doing it on the side with the agreement with West Haven that they were acceptable as long as my job was good. Um, and, and I s- I just started doing that and, and quickly realized like, hey, I could, I could do this for a lot of cities and, and. Not have a full-time one city, but do many. Um, cause the reality of it is, is like, the, the inspection process can be handled very, eh, very well. Even, even to the point, like, right now, I've been coming up one day a week. And that's, that's, right now, we're, we're a little slow, and that could have to ramp up again. Um, but one day a week has been sufficient to be able to come up and handle that. Um, and the great thing about technology is we can do virtual inspections. So I can do a footing and a foundation virtually, um, and, and go through the process, I, I can make them show me their, their setbacks and. Make them show me that they have survey, that kinda thing. You can do a lot of things virtually before you even have to actually physically touch the site. And then I can do the, the more technical inspections or the ones that I have concerns with in person on the Friday. Um, but, but I, I really enjoy, there's, uh, I had, I had quite a bit of challenge when I got here. Um, the, eh, I am not saying this to be saying it against anybody in the past, um, but really is a matter of just, just kind of raising the bar. Um, there was a lot of things that were, eh, per se, I don't know if they were getting inspected or not, but more, it just wasn't getting documented. Um, there was, there was a lot of, of lack of documentation and lack of keeping the records that we need to have, um, and so. Eh, also challenging of folks saying like, oh yeah, we had that taken care of. And then I get there and I'm like, this is the first time that anybody's ever documented an inspection here, and you're at final. You know, I'm, I'm supposed to be here seven, eight times before this, what's, you know, what's going on, oh, we talked to, we talked to the previous inspector, he has it all on his phone, okay. And you, and so, yeah, raising that bar up and, and trying to do that delicately to not, you know, frustrate people and get them all riled up, which is. Easy to do when you tell someone they have to have an ADA compliant bathroom in their, in their building, that's, how old is this building?
Uh, just a year or so.
You mean the bathroom? So, but yeah, no, challenges for sure.
The only shortcoming I see in this whole deal is, we gotta get you moved up here.
I, uh, I've been trying. He, he is, uh, he oddly enough, though, so he has, so my next-door neighbor and him served in the same mission. Um, and, uh, and my, yeah, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're gonna get that, my wife out of that neighborhood, she loves it.
And he inspected the Anderson Brothers' building, Anderson Asphalt down there in West Haven.
Yeah, they're good, they're good kids.
They're homegrown, raised.
They're hard workers.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate you and we appreciate your, the rapport you have with the county. Yeah, that means quite a bit. There's always the worry that, um, hiring a consultant takes away a job from the community, but you, you've done such an excellent job that it's pretty easy to justify. Continuing our relationship with you.
Well, if you, and, and to, to second that, if you guys ever have anybody that expresses interest in it. Um, not that I wanna like, give the, give away what I do, but like, I would love to help someone, you know, bring up the, the, into that. It's, it's a tough gig, I have people ask me all the time, like, oh, you, you just have to just like, go do some, some tests, right? Well, yeah, but they're really hard, I have a guy doing it right now, and he's, he's struggling, he's taken the test seven times. And that's just the first test, there's eight, so.
Maybe as you grow, if you, if you expand into Northern Utah, you can find somebody that lives here and.
Yeah.
Hire them into your company.
Get them, get them excited about it, or just move someone or me, or, I wanna live here, but.
Yeah.
That's, my wife's the, she's a Davis County girl, so.
Yeah. Takes a special kinda pioneer blood to live up here.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate your report.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, anytime you want me to come up, and I didn't realize you guys were, this is, this is the, this is great to have during the day. Last night I was in a meeting at, uh, where was I last night, I was in Tremont last night until, we ta- we had that meeting until ten-thirty. So, I like the day meetings.
Yeah, thank you, drive safe, thanks. Team member. Still the snow out there again.
Yep.
Alrighty, thank you for not being mad, cause we pushed you back, but then guys was here and snowing. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You got a smile, you got a smile, we're alright.
Kim Wilson, Rich Kenny assessor. Here are the numbers, the number for the refund for, uh, Mr. Schwartz. So that's what the total.
Thirty-seven.
So, it's on the back.
It's for one year.
Oh.
Yeah, so I had to do about four years, so it's the total, would be the twenty.
Twenty-seven. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, so if you need to do a motion to make, to do the, um, the number, then it's there for you.
Yeah, I think we gave you the authority to pick whatever number you wanted, honestly.
I didn't pick any number, I, I did it.
We knew you wouldn't.
Officially, so, but if you need a number to approve, then there you go.
I guess if Bill wanted, he could amend his, it was his motion, he could amend it with that number if he wanted. I don't want it. Okay.
So, I will, uh, the motion that, to, to grant, uh, William Schwartz, Schwartz, his property tax refund from, uh. His, uh, from changing, uh, from a secondary residence to a primary residence, the total refund for the four years, um. Is two thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
To the parcel on that? Forty-one, thirty, oh one oh, zero, 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 five.
Pulled that right off the top of her head.
And I will make you a copy of this and.
Was that a motion, or were you just reading the number?
He made a motion to amend his motion.
I, I made a motion to amend.
Okay, I will second that motion to amend.
Okay, motion, amended motion, that the exact amount be twenty-seven hundred and.
Thirty-nine dollars.
Thirty-nine, twenty, thirty-five cents, home favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, okay, I have one other one, this is Mike Millberry. He should've been primary this last year, he actually filed his primary residential statement in twenty-two. But I missed getting it changed, so it's corrected for twenty-four, but for twenty-three, it was not. And so, that's his amount of refund for the one year for two thousand twenty-three.
My motion that we change, we're gonna refund Mike Millberry. One thousand forty dollars and fourteen cents for, um, a refund from primary, from secondary home to a primary residence.
Second.
Moving second that, we are refund Mr. Millberry one thousand forty dollars and fourteen cents, home favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? She cares.
Thank you, I also have personal, personal property resident, or personal property exemptions. Do you want me to leave them and let you look at them, and then I bring them back after you do your thing? That's all I have for you gentlemen, unless you have anything for me?
Any questions for our assessor?
I apologize for missing the staff meeting this morning, I was actually listening to the assessor's legislative meeting, I was participating on Zoom. So I, I apologize for missing this one, but couldn't make it all work this morning.
Seems like that's like where the most movement is on stuff that affects you.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep, and there's stuff that's definitely gonna affect us.
Well, it's good you're keeping up on it, so, that's fine.
You have something?
Well, I'm thinking we were gonna ask you something, but I can't remember, I didn't, I didn't make a note of it, but anyway, if it comes up, well, well.
Okay, and if you need me to come back on, or if you needed any more information on these, if you'll let me know, and then I can swing back in.
Yes, I can.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
That's all the personal property he's got.
That's too bad. So what's he saying on the bottom there?
What's up this afternoon, Sean? What's in committee? Anything today?
Yes, um. Of course, you asked me, and I left my laptop and there's not much in there. Seventy-eight, um, what am I thinking? Some Beatles, some, uh, business economic problem, the labor. Yeah, I can't remember what it is. Stand by.
How much can they go to now?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-five thousand.
It's on the front.
Twenty-five thousand?
It's just, they outdo, it's twenty-eight, four.
Twenty-eight thousand four hundred, sorry, yeah, they, they took it another.
The housing affordability one? SB one-six-eight?
Um, yes, is it today or tomorrow?
Today. That's the one, uh, talking about modular homes.
Yeah, that we were talking about yesterday.
Yeah.
We're still streaming, yes?
Mm-hmm.
Recovering politicians always worry about a live stream and a hot mic, but some candid thoughts that I was sharing still, still last on that, John.
Yeah. Oh, the active trails and canal trail amendments.
That's one that's really big in cash, and, um.
They support it?
There's some concerns, that's, Bear River Watershed Council, um, you know, for what it's worth, I sit on that, and I'm happy to give. Reports or pass along, I'm taking note as, as Chairman Weston advanced me to this a couple meetings ago, trying to be brief. And not inundate your inbox, but I can pass it on being notes. Have you guys seen the economic impact study that came out for the Bear River on the, in the region?
No.
Would you like me to forward stuff like that to you?
Yeah, I haven't seen that study yet, so yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, we can. We had Nathan Dobbs, uh, give an update at our last Bear River Watershed Council on that study. Are you guys going to Mexico?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we are. When do you leave?
Tomorrow. I've got two meetings in the morning, and I have a flight with a transfer, cause I'll miss that direct, that I love so much.
So you're not flying on Delta?
I am.
Okay. Do you have a layover somewhere?
Atlanta, yeah.
Where are you layover? I don't think I have one. Are you leaving at nine?
Yeah, are you going on the direct one with the.
Nine-thirty? Let me look it up right here. I think there was one, there was an earlier one.
You leave tomorrow?
Yeah.
The only direct flight is.
Ninety-fourth flight.
Just one of the groups, one of the affiliate groups for economic development, community development, has their meetings one day before the legislative conference.
They must've added a flight, because I'm leaving at five forty-five PM, and getting there at eleven forty-one.
Oh, that, that one was on, that was an optional too.
Yeah.
I gotta start early on Friday morning in board meetings, so I didn't wanna get there too late.
That's true, I forgot about that one.
Cause the, the one that lands at around five o'clock here turns around and gets ready and heads back out direct.
And my motion that we approve the personal property tax exemptions, that's been presented to the assessor.
Second that.
Okay, motion that we approve our, the personal property exemption tax. Okay, motion that we approve our the personal property exemption tax as presented by our assessor, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Would you would you uh entertain a us adjourned for lunch?
Yep.
I'm gonna pause this then.
We will take an adjournment till one o'clock for lunch.
All right, we'll call commission meeting back to order. Ben Willoughby, our attorney, is next on the agenda.
And hopefully he's where he's got service.
Hi, this is Ben.
Hi, how you doing?
Good.
You on the side of the road, or where are you?
I'm about ten miles west of Evanston, just by the state line. I think this is my new home.
You can't, you can't keep going or turn around or anything? You're just sitting there?
No, I'm trapped. There's like ten thousand semi trucks. They did just open the southbound lane, so that's something.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway.
Southbound.
How are you? Is everybody there?
Yes.
Good, okay.
Yeah, if you can, if you can do her over the phone, we can, we can do it right now.
Yeah, I think we can. Are we on the record yet?
Yes, yep, we are.
Okay. And does, does John happen to have his computer there? It was open to show you a few things on our website.
I do, yeah, I have it.
Okay. John, if you don't mind pulling up the county website, and I just wanna, and maybe you can point out some things as we go through.
Okay, I got it open.
Okay, great. So I now have a thumb drive that has all of the ordinances for Rich County, other than the development code. And they've all, I've gone through each of them and made them so you could read them with a screen reader. And so I think we're ready to put them up on our website. Some of the ones that, the copies were too degraded, or the, or the fonts were, you know, from thirty years ago. I just had to retype. But I think we're, we're ready to go with that. So I would like authorization to go ahead and put those up just as PDF links on our website. Currently, John, are you, do you have the county website pulled up?
Yes.
Okay, so if you click under the property tab.
Okay.
And it'll pull up all the sublinks there. And the second from the bottom, you'll see the county code.
Okay.
What, I was thinking that what we would do, instead of having it buried under property tab, just to put it up at the top, replacing the one that says legal, which is third from the right. Do you see that tab?
Yep.
Okay, so what if we labeled that one county code? That's, that was legal. Under legal right now, if you click under that for me, John.
Yeah, I'm there.
It pulls up sublinks for my office, the sheriff's office, and the Rich County courts. Those three things, we could, we could move under the government tab. So if you'll click for me, John, under the government tab.
Okay.
And that has, that has all of the other offices in the county. And it seems like it would make sense to put my office's website, the sheriff's website, and the county court's website all under government.
That sounds good.
And that would leave, that would leave what used to be legal, now called the county code, empty. And we could ask our website person just to then put, it's about thirty, thirty to thirty-five links, just PDF documents that you can click on, with common sense names, like, you know, control of dogs and other pets, beach protection ordinance, protection of water sources, spotlighting ordinance, you know, just common sense names like that, in no particular order. We could alphabetize them or something, and we put them under county code. What do you all think about that?
I think that sounds good. I think that, that would work good, in my opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that Bill?
Yeah, this is me.
Okay, hey, Bill. And then lastly, we have these ordinances, they created about six forms. There's a form that you fill out to apply for a short-term rental, there's a form for a business license, there's a beekeeper registration form, a grandma request form, and a residential property tax exemption form. And I'm blanking on the sixth one right now. Anyway, so for those, what are your thoughts of where we should put them? We could keep them under county code, just forms down the bottom. Or we could create a new tab at the top that says forms. I was mostly interested in what, what you all thought of where we should stick those six forms.
So right now they're under licenses, is that correct?
Right now, John, if I can have you click one more time for manager property.
Yeah, they're under property and county code.
And then click on county code.
Yeah, that's kind of hard to find.
And then they're under county code.
Yeah.
And they're not all there. Like, I don't think the beekeeper one's there. I don't think the residential property tax exemption form is there, but there are a few right there. So I think the two options that seem the best to me is either keep it under county code, under just maybe another folder that says forms, or create another tab on the top that says forms.
Well, under licenses, we've got building permits, and we got business licenses, and we got short-term rental. Those, those all generate forms as well. That's why I was wondering.
What if we just do licenses and permits as the menu?
Yeah, we could change the title back to licenses and forms.
Okay.
Yeah, that might be the thing to do, because if they're, they, you know, the form that pops up, for example, under building permit, they fill all that out and then submit it. Same thing for the short-term rental, they print that off and then submit it. So I, I, I don't know, just a thought.
That's a good one. So we change the tab on the top that currently says licenses, have it say licenses slash forms, and stick them all there.
That might be the thing to do, yeah.
Okay. John, Sam, what do you guys think?
Yep. Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so, and then our, our development code is, is huge and messy and probably still needs to be revised. And I think what we do is we just put a line under county code that says, for a copy of the development code, contact Mitch Paulson, and give his email address right there.
Good idea.
Okay. All right, so my understanding is that we have contracted with a woman that does our website, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I'll get with Annalisa and get her contact info. And I'll coordinate with her to make it look like just what we discussed, and hopefully get this done fast.
Great.
Are there any other thoughts or concerns about that?
I can help communicate that to Ann. I've got everything down. I'll, I'll run it past you first, but if you'll send me all the PDFs, and maybe recommendations of maybe what to call them, I'll, I can help you with that.
Perfect. Can you, Annalisa, would you send me an email that has Ann's phone number and email?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll send her something, and I'll CC you on it.
That's okay.
And that would be great. Okay. All right, guys, thank you. If you don't see me in a month, send Dale down here to find me.
Well, I'm sorry, I wish, are you past, are you past the check-in station there, the, the port of entry, the Wyoming one?
I think I'm just short of it.
So if you could get just a little bit further up, you could swing, you know, there's a crossover right there, and you could swing around and head back west.
Yeah, that's well, that's a good idea.
You, you're in your little, you're in your little car. How, how much? They must have it completely shut down just the other side of Evanston, and I'm guessing because of the sisters or that, but.
That's what I'm thinking. Well, it serves me right for attempting to come up. But in the valley, it was just raining.
We, we had a couple other people come up, our building inspector, he come up and, and they, they said the weather was bad, you know. I mean, the front of their outfits were totally plastered. Are you in your Prius?
Nope, I have a new SUV.
Oh, good.
Well, you can cross over anywhere then.
I even have a heated seat, so just fun.
All right, well, if, if you're, you're still sitting there by, you know, seven or eight o'clock, let me know, and I'll run your pizza out.
Okay, thanks, guys. Is there anything else that, I was just gonna touch base with you all and see if there's anything else that you need to help with.
So, just, just one question. You reviewed those documents from Unified Fleet Services, particularly the ordinance they wanted us to, to ratify, is that okay? Did you, did it look? particularly the ordinance they wanted us to, to ratify. Is that okay? Did you, did it look okay?
I think it was just a resolution to sign the contract, right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, every note signed, I, I got those back to Annalisa just a few days after I got it. Everything looks just like it did. It was a couple years ago we signed something just like this.
Right.
There were no, no surprises.
Yeah.
Except maybe the, the dollar amount.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Sounds good.
All right. Well, thanks, guys.
Thanks, thanks, Ben. Good luck.
Good luck getting home.
See ya.
Yeah, thanks.
Oh, I didn't know you'd done that.
Yeah. That's bad. Alrighty. Yeah, I haven't looked through, but I'll let you.
All right, so I wonder, do we need a motion to have our ordinances placed on the website? I wonder if we ought to.
Seems like that would be an executive function that probably can just be done.
I would think so.
Now, that'll be nice.
Anybody had time to look at the minutes?
I've looked at them.
I have.
I found a couple of spelling corrections. And let's see, this isn't my copy. I have them all underlined and redlined. All right. So I would make a motion that we approve the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Oh, second that motion.
Okay, moving second, we approve the December thirteenth commission meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Are you ready for the January minutes too, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the January third minutes for last month.
Second.
Okay, it's moving second that we approve the January third minutes of commission meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, I would approve, I would move that we approve the expenditures.
Second that.
Okay, moving second that the expenditures be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So I would move that we approve the resolution to authorize United Fleet to lease vehicles with United Fleet, that the county will do a lease on vehicles for a three-year period of term, three, three-year period of time.
Second.
Motion that we sign the resolution with Unified Fleet authorizing our leasing of vehicles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
After reviewing the condensed version of the emergency management plan that was presented to us last month by our emergency manager, I didn't see anything in there that was concerning. And felt like that it covered the scope of the original management plan just in the condensed version. And so I'd make a motion that we approve that emergency management plan.
Okay, I second that motion.
Okay. Motion is to approve the emergency management plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other business before the commission?
If not, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Our February seventh meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
We need to get you a gavel, I guess.